I would like to call the special meeting of the city council to order. City clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Mora.
Here.
Councilmember Sarno.
Here.
Councilmember Thugheal.
Here.
Mayor Procham Zamora.
Here.
And Mayor Rodriguez.
Here. Thank you. Public comments will be considered after item number three on the agenda to allow attendees to receive information during the general plan update presentation. Item number three, 2040 Comprehensive General Plan Update. I would like to call on our city manager, Ray Cruz.
Yes, honorable mayor and city council members. I just wanted to give some introductory comments before I hand it over to staff. You know, you've already had two study sessions this month on the general plan update. There's been a lot of discussion from the industry group of brokers and landowners about some of their issues with the update. And you've been very concerned that we have some good dialogue with them. So you've had a couple of study sessions. And we have had a number of meetings, including one that was yesterday. Also, the planning commission had a study session earlier in the month. And on Monday, they actually recommended the approval of the general plan. There was eight or seven options that were brought before them. That were some of the things that we were hearing from the industry group to be included. They didn't officially approve those. They really were looking for council to continue to work with the industry group. So you can make your final decision. And we had seven of those that were outlined on Monday night. One was suggested by Chair Arnold to be adjusted, which we have done. And there are two new ones that have been developed regarding the the freeway overlay zone and the non-conforming uses. So those will be, those nine different topics will be brought up tonight by staff. We will, we also were, in our yesterday's meeting, there was some discussions specifically on the freeway overlay zone and non-conforming uses in some specific zones that were being changed. And some of those comments were being sent to us today. We got them this afternoon. Some of them were similar to some things that we were going to incorporate tonight. Some things were different. I would say we're probably, you know, eighty percent in agreement with things that we put in here. Some things were closely in agreement. Some things were very far away from it. But I think we've had some very productive and collegial meetings that have been really helpful. And we'll continue that until we adopt on February 8. But at this point, I just wanted to make those comments and we'll let staff speak on what we've done so far.
I got a question before we start, please, Ray. You made a comment that were, some things are very far away. Are you guys going to highlight the areas of where we are very far away? So we know, so we know what, where their differences are between the business and us.
Yeah, I, I, yes, I, those will be highlighted. As far as we know, we, we just got those letters this afternoon, just on the quick review. Some of the language they were using was further away than we thought as staff were comfortable with. However, if that's becoming our recommendations, council can be very comfortable with that language that they present. And, and you'd be right on board with what you're thinking. So when I say that, that's more from a staff recommendation to you. Not saying that we can get closer, but I think some things, no matter what, what happens, we thought there will always be things, points of contention or difference. But ultimately, the council, it's your decision on what you want to do with that information.
We just want to make sure we're on the same, I, I'm sure that everybody wants to make sure we're all on the same page. And making sure, what is the difference and why we are working in a different manner, or whatever the situation is. But I just want to make sure we know what those differences are and then we can respond to those differences.
We'll present that as best as we know it. I mean, there was a lot of information that was provided, you know, late, earlier this afternoon and trying to get everything done for tonight's meeting. But we'll, we'll present what we know and at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is my, that is my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I would like to call on Director of Planning, Wayne Morrell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. So just for clarification, it isn't necessarily a slide that you would see that specifically states where far away in terms of agreement. What we did is there was some language that was presented to us later today. And we had a cursory look at that language. Keep in mind, some of the letters were three, four, even five pages. So we just know that the language in terms of what we were proposing is different than what we received. So again, it isn't that you necessarily see a particular slide that would indicate we're far apart on any particular issue. So with that in mind, I would like to call on Assistant Planning Director Quang to do the presentation, please. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief. So I'll essentially go over some of the results of, of what we've come up with so far in terms of the nine options. Now, staff is, is committed, committed to working with the community from now until February 8 to refine them as necessary. We do know that in the end, we, we won't make everyone happy, but we'll do our best to present all options that are available that makes sense for the city as a whole. So not sure if Jeff has the options up yet. Okay, so the, the first four options I'll share with you are possible text changes. Starting with option number one shown here, it's a possible change to the business park land use description. We provided optional language that would not outright prohibit certain uses identified, but rather limit them. Next slide, please. So option two, which is very similar to option one. We provided some language to soften up the text from prohibited to limited in regards to light industrial land use description. Next slide, please. So option three, recognizing that there is concerns from the, the community in regards to freeway commercial, which seems to discourage all industrial uses. Staff did add language to recognize that compatible light industrial uses and manufacturing of specialty goods are permissible. You know, I, I think we're going to continue to refine this and we, we actually have a matrix that clarifies the land use compatibility of the general plan versus the implementing zone. And I'll, I'll share that with you in the upcoming slides. Option, next slide, please. So option four is, is actually several items that they include new changes to the land use element and the implementation plan, as well as the, the zone district matrix that I was referring to. So first, next slide, please. So first, staff added two new policies to address non-conforming uses and amortization requirements. We created flexibility for legally established uses and structures as well, consistent with land use compatibility goals. So we also did the same, creating the same flexibility for freeway commercial properties as well. Next slide, please. So second, we created a program within the implementation plan, which directs staff to review non-conforming sections of the zoning code. And specifically to establish reasonable and practical non-conforming and amortization regulations that recognize building lifespan as well as investment maturity. We also addressed the legally permitted uses and structures that are made non-conforming as a result of the general plan efforts. So that will be part of the implementation plan for the general plan. Next slide, please. So this is the matrix. As you could see, and, and I know the business community was a little bit concerned because we, we were creating a new well, several new zones, one of which is the, the light industrial zone. And to, to help ease the business community, this is a matrix that essentially shows the implementing zone associated with the, the new general plan land use. So as you can see, the light industrial designation, it correlates with our existing light manufacturing zone. That is a, a zone that currently is in place. It, which has existing permitted uses, accessory uses and conditional uses. We're not proposing to change that. All those properties that are designated as light industrial within the general plan will essentially be zoned and, and the M1 zone will be applicable to those properties. Next slide, please. So the next few slides are more site specific. Option five pertains to properties west of the 605 freeway. You know, while the land use map does show these properties as light industrial, we do recognize that, that this site is somewhat unique. And therefore, we have provided an option to keep these properties as industrial. Next slide, please. Options both six and seven are similar in nature. In both of these options, the existing land use map, we utilize the nearby streets as boundaries for the new light industrial zone. This is consistent with the, the M1 zone as shown in our zoning map. But staff is providing an option to have the light industrial designation. Specifically in this case, north of Telegraph and west of Norwalk, stop at the 500 foot distance. Next slide, please. So option seven, similar to option six, is to essentially keep the M1 zone designation at the 500 feet mark and eliminating properties just north of Florence that are outside the 500 foot radius. Next slide, please. So option eight relates to parcel on the southwest corner of Norwalk and Florence, also known as the Coontz property, Coontz site. This option considers a designation of business park instead of light industrial as seen in the land use plan. If you're familiar with this area, you probably know that there are various land uses that are incompatible with one another. And you have an adult use, some manufacturing uses, mobile home park, all next to one another. The proposed land use plan is just essentially hoping to provide the foundation for future uses in this area that's, that's compatible with one another. And whether it's changed from commercial as, as proposed or business park as this option shows, we think that both would achieve that goal. Next slide, please. The last option relates to the Merrick's Goodman site located on the northwest corner of Bloomfield and Excelsior, also known as the Vaughn's facility. We have two options here. Next slide, please. So before I go through those options, I'll, the, the existing land use plan does show this property to be rezoned on the west side as business park and leaving the east portion as industrial. This approach is unique. In no other instance do we create a dual zone property. But in this case, because the property is, is significantly larger than all others in, in the city, especially adjacent to residential. It stands at over, a little over seventy-five acres. So we, we did feel that there was a unique circumstance here to create a dual zone with business park and industrial. However, there are two other options for you to consider. Next slide, please. The first option, option nine point one, is instead of business park, to rezone the westerly portion to light industrial. We would still line up with the adjacent residential properties, similar to the, the previous proposal, but instead rezone it to light industrial. The east portion would stay industrial as, as proposed previously. Next option, or next slide. So the second option, nine point two, this option was recommended by Chairman Arnold on Monday. Essentially, this, this option is to rezone just the first 500 feet, both along Bloomfield as well as Excelsior. And only for the areas adjacent to residential. The, the east portion, as well as the interior part of the site, would remain industrial in this option. Next slide, please. So those are the, the nine options that, that we have generated to date. But we, again, as Wayne mentioned, we, we did receive two emails earlier today, which contain several recommendations for changes. Staff will continue to, to go through them, both letters and, and if additional options are appropriate. And more importantly, in line with the overall vision and guiding principles, staff will, will look into adding them as options for you to consider as you consider adoption of the general plan on February 8. So that, that concludes my presentation for tonight.
Thank you, Quang. Wayne, did you have something you'd like to say?
Yes, please, Madam Mayor. So I think what really helped in terms of some of our discussion, especially as it pertained to the, to the light industrial. We had the concept out there as the light industrial. And a lot of the developers did not understand what that meant or what types of uses would be allowed. But as Quang stated, the light industrial, that's a general plan designation. But in effect, in terms of zoning, it's a light manufacturing zone. So with that clarification, the developer, everyone could look at that existing zoning and see what types of uses would be allowed and not allowed. And I think that made quite a big difference in terms of the understanding and more of acceptance of that particular type of zoning. The other item that I thought made a difference based on our discussion, especially as it pertained to the freeway overlay zone, letting everyone know that as part of the implementation plan, the existing permitted uses would remain. And they could look at what is the permitted uses within the freeway overlay zone. And note definitively, these are the types of, these are the types of uses that would be allowed. So it wasn't an ambiguity anymore. They could physically go to the zoning code and see what types of uses are there. With respect to the member Sarno on some of where we think we may be somewhat apart. It comes to the non-conforming provision. And just based on a cursory look, our idea was to have some type of amortization period within those, within which those uses were to remain. And what we saw just preliminary was that the wording wanted those to remain essentially forever with the caveat being that when the property is redeveloped, then that's when it can change. But redevelop did not include any intensification of use. And if you were to look at, I'll say ninety-nine percent of all codes within California, there is a provision that anything that is non-conforming or allowed to remain, that changes when you expand the facility. So if it's a 50,000 square foot building and you wanted to add 25,000 square foot to it, it does not remain as is. Or if it had five truck loading doors and you wanted to add an additional 25 doors. So I think for Councilman Sarno, Councilmember Sarno, just that one particular section, because that was one of the first that was listed on the letter. That's where we see a difference in terms of our concept and what was presented. Now, it does not mean that we cannot find some mid-ground. I'm not saying that at all. But just from a cursory review, that's what it appears to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. You know what, Wayne? That was very well put. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Wayne.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Wayne. Okay, we're ready to go into public comments. Public comments are now open. Anyone joining us through Zoom can use the raise hand function if you wish to make a public comment on any item on the agenda. The city clerk will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application and you will have two minutes to speak. City clerk, do we have any members of the public present that wish to speak today?
And Mayor, we have a few speakers. The first one is Mike Foley.
Thank you. Hi, Mike.
Hello there. Can everybody, oh. Hello, everybody. Can I be heard?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I'm Mike Foley with Colliers International. I'm a commercial real estate broker here in the city. And I just want to thank honorable mayors, city council, and the city's management team, specifically Ray, Wayne and Quan for listening to us, putting up with us and, and having an open ear to hear, hear our sort of position on this. And we do appreciate that. And so in an effort to provide a little context, what we've tried to accomplish since we were tasked by Councilman Zamora about two weeks ago to say, when, when he said, present ideas. And, and I appreciate that. So over the last two weeks, 25 of us, both real estate brokers, real estate developers and property owners have participated in calls and study sessions to help craft reasonable language. We estimated that over, this group represents over 10 million square feet of industrial space in Santa Fe Springs. And again, we don't speak for every property owner, don't get me wrong, but we tried to get a consensus and everybody was very cooperative. Also, just in, in the area of cooperation, I just wanted to discuss briefly that we were also worked with the city staff to try to work through this road maintenance issue and this deferred $10 million shortfall. And we've worked over the last seven months, working with Ray and his team to try to come up with solutions. And we are working in that direction. Again, that meant a lot to us. And it, it's important to us for this, from a city standpoint, from a business standpoint. And today is no different from that. We really want to work in a cooperative level with, with the city. And I'd also, we've had a couple of other people that are, are obviously hands raised to speak, but we wanted to provide you a little bit of overview as to the zoning, zoning concerns that we have, along with a frank discussion on non-conforming uses, which we're going to have people talk to that. Again, I appreciate everybody's time and I, I thank you for your time today. And I am finished. Thank you.
Thank you very much. City clerk, can we have our next speaker, please?
Madam Mayor, next we have Steve Mazurah.
Hi, Steve.
Hi, good evening, Council, city council and staff, and audience. Steve Mazurah with Rexford Industrial. Yeah, we have a group of us to speak. I'm, I'm, I've been asked to speak on the non-conforming uses in general. And since we only have, how much time do we have? Two minutes?
Two minutes.
I, I, I would like to have read the whole thing, but maybe staff could do that, what we proposed. Wayne has inquired correct. We were at opposite ends at one point because we didn't know where the city was going with any of the non-conforming uses. We're getting a little closer to halfway there with, with each other. And yes, we, the way we worded it is to have more of a sort of indefinite timeframe. But that is important because you, we've heard you say that we, you want to allow existing uses to continue. So in, we want to ensure that we have fair flexibility basically. And the, in the code currently has a precedent in it for Telegraph corridor where uses can remain in place indefinitely. So actually, what we propose is, is actually better than that. It, it isn't, it's just an outright indefinite time. It's, it's, it's trying to define when we could do alterations and improvements versus fully redeveloping. And in most cities, they allow sort of unlimited continued use until some trigger. Now, that's where we would like to get back together with staff and figure out what those triggers are and make them more based on criteria, not on amortization periods. Criteria where, let's look at it on a case by case basis and show the economic benefits versus if there's any new environmental impacts from whatever changes in, or intensification, as Wayne said. So we would like to have the chance to get together with staff one more time and work out that wording. And I do have a comment for that I need to talk about as well, that I have not gotten response from staff on.
Okay, no, thank you, Steve.
Are we allowed to ask questions to, to these comments at all, Ray, Ivy?
Yes.
We are?
Yes.
So Steve, can, can you please be, what location are you talking about for your guys' property? And the non-conforming and the language that you would like to see is, what will trigger a non, the, the wording of rezoning or redeveloping to, you know, if you guys want to add a new lighting or new electrical or something like that, but not adding to the square footage or something to that nature, I would like to know those, if that's where you're stuck at.
Well, I can't give you a specific example, but the concept is that we want to maintain our, be kept whole in our investments, basically. But also to improve those properties, which brings economic benefit to the city with, with property value, sales tax in many cases, even business to business sales tax and jobs. So we just want to have a conversation that says that this is not creating a, if it's not creating a, an environmental impact, but could be actually providing an economic benefit.
And where's your location? Where's the location, the, your?
Any, well, any property this would have applied to, that's the, that's the problem with non-conforming uses.
Specific for yours? I mean, where's yours located?
Well, we, we have properties that are within 500 feet of residential where the, in, we've worked out some of the language in the, the light industrial and business park, which I'm talking about, that is going to allow some flexibility and not outright prohibit certain use, certain uses, trucking uses. But we're concerned that if we don't have some assurance that we have flexibility going forward and when we actually go talk to, about the zoning code, that they're going to make definitions that outright prohibit certain uses. And we wouldn't even be able to change our tenant or put a doctor in, for example, because it doesn't meet, doesn't meet the, the code.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. City clerk, can we have our next speaker, please?
Madam Mayor, next speaker is Frances Park.
Thank you. Hi, Frances.
Hi, honorable council members. Good evening. I'm Frances Park from Parkville, Iowa, representing P.S. Business Parks, which owns 11 industrial properties in the city, located at Florence and Pioneer and 27 acres with over 540,000 square feet of buildings. My client purchased these properties in September 2019 for over 100 million after confirming with the city that all of the uses and buildings were permitted. Since then, we engaged in a lengthy and expensive CUP process that permitted an Amazon center, distribution center in October 2020. We were therefore surprised, after working with the city so closely, to find out about a week ago that the city's update process would prohibit most, if not all, of the existing uses on our 27 acres. For the last two and a half years, this update was never mentioned to us. And we didn't receive any notice of this change that could materially devalue our properties. We are hoping tonight to rectify the situation and course correct with the coalition of industrial stakeholders that have submitted compromised language to allow the city to move forward in unison. One of the most critical items, as you've heard, is the concept of permitting existing uses that have become non-conforming because of this update. The city's code on this update is quite draconian and we require removal within five years. Everyone agrees that's unreasonable. All we're asking for is to allow these existing buildings to be used as they were intended and remain that way until those properties are redeveloped. Secondly, we want you to reconsider the outright prohibition of uses. The existing zoning regulations include a process that takes into consideration compatibility with surrounding uses. This is exactly what happened with the Amazon CUP, which required This is exactly what happened with the Amazon C U P, which required conditions to ensure compatibility with the nearby residential. And in fact, a number of large trailer trucks have dramatically reduced as a result. We want to ensure that existing process is available in the future. Let's not fix what is not broken. The city's language and option two does not go far enough to protect our interests. We hope you can adopt our language, which allows the city's process to work for any sensitive uses close to five hundred feet of residential. We hope that you will give our compromise a fair consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Francis. Uh, city clerk, can we have our next speaker, please?
Madam Mayor, next we have Stefan Wando.
Hi, Stefan.
Uh, yes, uh, good evening. Would it possible to have Lang Cottrell with Goodman go first? Uh, if you don't mind, we're speaking on behalf of the the property owners group, and I would like, if that's possible. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, hi, Lang.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, everybody. Lang Cottrell with Goodman. And I thank, thank you again for taking the time this evening to to continue working together to find compromise on the proposed language for the general plan. Uh, as the city consultants have said, this document provides the blueprint for the future development of the city, and thus it's crucial that the wording. Provides the city the ability to enforce the proposed changes for new development while preserving the rights of the existing business owners. It's also important that the wording provides the future governing councils over the next decades the flexibility to review. And make make decisions on a case by case basis as well. The industry change, the suggested changes provided by our industry group. Uh, to the staff and the council today seek to provide both that structure and flexibility for future governance. On, I've been asked to talk about the light industrial, uh, the light industrial. For the light industrial, our understanding from the discussion with staff over the past few weeks. Is the uses will be aligned with the current M one zoning ordinances. The changes we've added, such as adding some wording for allowed uses of warehouse, research and development and processing. To the language of the allowed uses is consistent with that M one zoning, so that is why we we've included that. Uh, the balance of the language changes also seek to better define the five hundred foot buffer from from the residential properties. And provide the flexibility for city leaders to consider some uses on a case by case basis in the future. Uh, the changes uh, in the industrial language, uh, as proposed are minor and mostly aimed. At clarification and eliminating language that contradicts language elsewhere in the general plan. Finally, uh, Goodman appreciates the staff's reconsideration of land use designation of business park. To light industrial with a buffer of five hundred feet uh, from the residential property on our bond site. Um, while the depth of the appropriate buffer can be debated, the down zoning. Uh, of the former bond site is now consistent with. Our balance of the city, so we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lang. Uh, Stefan, would you like to go next?
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Um, and again, that this is Stefan Wandel with Golden Springs. And again, speaking on behalf of the the property owners that have met recently. So again, you know, they all speak to uh, proposed changes that are in the letter with respect to freeway commercial. I think some of it was addressed by staff earlier today. Uh, we appreciate the intent of uh, of. Of modifying the existing general plan, which was unclear. Uh, that seemed to not conform. To uh, the freeway overlay zone, so staff uh, agreement to. Uh, to make the implemented use the freeway overlay zone is really helpful. So we appreciate that. You'll see some other language that makes it clear. Uh, that the the pictures that the council saw previously about the existing structures. Uh, remaining conforming after the general plans implemented, that those would continue accordingly. Uh, the previous language in the general plan uh, was pretty clear to the opposite. So I'll probably move on. Uh, speak to the business park language. I think the language staff was suggesting earlier. Uh, that trucking would not be prohibited, but instead limited. I think the industry group. Uh, feels uh, that we can, we can work with that type of language. And uh, I I think probably another comment I'd like to make on behalf of the group. A lot of us have worked uh, really hard over the last two weeks, uh, trying to get twenty five property owners to agree to anything. It's kind of a challenge. Uh, but it's been very cooperative within us. We hope the city will hear all of us. Uh, we think this is important to us. Um, there will be some minor changes coming back in a in a document tomorrow morning. Uh, but I think what you've heard from us so far is. Closing. So thanks for hearing us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, city clerk, do, can we have our next speaker, please?
Madam Mayor, next is Ajit.
Good evening, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, I can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Ajit Thind. I'm here on behalf of Premier R V Storage, S F S L L C. Which is a family owned company that owns a property in the northwest corner of the city of Santa Fe Springs. Behind the Dollar Self Storage on Pioneer. As you may recall, myself and my clients, the Manassians, have spoken to many of you and city staff regarding the general plan update and an objection. To the proposed down zoning of the property to light industrial. We previously sent two letters to the city council and planning commission to highlight some of the reasons we believe. That the proposed down zoning is misplaced. In summary, first, the property is uniquely buffered by the San Gabriel River, six oh five freeway. And the Dollar Self Storage business. There are no nearby residences and the property is tucked away from all sensitive uses. Second, the G P A G actually analyzed our property and adjacent properties in the Los Nietos industrial focus area. And recommended no change to the land use designation. After our correspondence, oral communications during various meetings, conversations with some of you and conversations with city staff. We're thrilled to learn that city staff now recommends that the council retain the current land use as is. And to not downzone the property. And this was mentioned to you as option five today. We want to thank all of you again for listening and just emphasize the importance of retaining the property's current land use designation. And to exempt the property from any down zoning. Thank you again.
Madam Mayor, next we have Moshe.
Thank you. Hi, Moshe.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so thank you very much for allowing me to have a couple of minutes to address you. Uh, so we're certainly moving in the right direction and we appreciate. Uh, that yesterday we had a good conversation with the city staff. I think it was the first really meaningful. Conversation, but I think we're still somewhat uh, far apart on on some important issues. The most important one being. The nonconforming use. So first of all, yesterday we were asked by the staff that we should allow the the general plan amendment to go, and we should trust the staff. That when the implementation is done in the zoning, that uh, we would be protected. And the entire business community uh, was really opposed to that, and we want to make sure that there's, this is a policy document. This is a policy document that has a vision. We want to make sure that this is consistent. Because otherwise, the zoning will have to be consistent with this document, and the document will really impair our interest as a business community. So we don't want to depend on uh, future promises. If you look at the slide that was presented. It says that there's going to be an implementing document that's going to be done by the end of twenty twenty two, and that's a slide that the staff presented tonight. Uh, I want to clarify, any industrial property that's going to stay as industrial property. Yesterday, the staff said that that will have uses that continue, unimpaired, unchanged. Therefore, I think that except for light industrial, freeway and business park, we should have a specific statement that says that. And with respect to the point, with respect to industrial and the new zoning of of freeway overlay zone. As well as the business park, if there's an issue about maintaining it until it's redeveloped and the concern is that. You know, somebody's going to increase the square footage by fifty percent, we can work on that issue. But we need to make sure that we're able to uh, enjoy the benefit of all these investments that all of us made. Thank you.
Thank you, Moshe. Uh, city clerk, can we have our next speaker?
Madam Mayor, we we don't have any more speakers.
Okay, okay.
Um, madam mayor, members of the council, if I may, I just wanted to clarify the process uh. To help, just to to make sure everybody realizes when we talk about. The general plan, we're gonna have a public hearing on on February eighth to consider the general plan. In terms of the implementation, which is the zoning amendments that will follow, those will have their own process as well. Those will go before a public hearing, before the planning commission, they will go before a public hearing, before the council. So, and then they will have two readings at the city council before those are adopted. So there's a whole separate process for that implementation. That implementation isn't done administratively. There'll be a robust public hearing process and um. If council directs multiple study sessions and further conversations to engage the community. Uh, when, as as we drill down into those details of the zoning code amendments and that implementation. So I just wanted to be sure that that was clear.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, I will now close public comments. Does council have any questions for staff?
I I do.
Sure.
That's, actually, this is an, this might be an off the wall question, uh, but for Chief Hayward. We know where there are a lot of uh, uses for hazardous materials and chemicals. Is, are these warehouses or where these manufacturers are? With the changing of these zones help you guys control more of the situations of where these chemicals and these places are?
Well, councilmembers, Sono, um, from what I've seen at this point. Our our rules and regulations for controlling hazardous materials within the city are well controlled and defined by the state at this point. Any other changes and things like that, I think would be stable at this point. I don't see at at this point any changes in in zoning really affecting. Any of the codes or enforcements that we have at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Does anybody else, any of our council have any more questions for our staff?
As a follow up to the Councilman Sono's question, maybe you, um, chief, I'm sure when you're fighting a fire. And there's hazardous chemicals within five hundred feet of a of a uh, home structure. That's more challenging to keep that neighborhood safe if it was further away. So so the further away hazardous materials are to residents, I'm sure that's a a better way of. Fighting those fires and keeping those chemicals that are burning away from those residences. Is can that be a true statement?
Absolutely, absolutely, Ray. Um, anytime you push any hazard. Or storage facility or any type of business further away from, let's say, a residential structure. Uh, you definitely increase that safety margin. And so. Yes, uh, to answer that question for sure.
And that's kind of the question that I wanted to get answered because do we have any? Places where we have concerns of being that close to the residential areas right now that. We are looking at.
At this point, from what I've seen. Uh, I think if you would have any concerns, it might be in the Coons area. Uh, Florence and Norwalk area. I'd have to take a little bit closer look at some of the overlays and how those. Industrial uses would change at this point. Um, a lot of the other areas within the city. Are not, from what I've seen at this point, gonna be negatively affected by this. If anything. Things would be positively affected as far as the safety margin.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, chief. Okay, so far, council doesn't have any more questions I'd like to ask. Does our staff have any comments or questions before we adjourn? Uh, Wayne, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that compared in previous meetings. And how long it took and the questions and the number of speakers. I think this meeting demonstrates how staff and the business community have been working together. To try to work out these issues. So I would just like to thank the business community staff. Ivy, Ray, all of us for really sitting down and working together to try to. Come up with a solution to all of this. And again, everyone may not be happy, but I think we're doing a. Bloody great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any any other staff would like to make any comments? Yes?
Yeah, I I probably get my staff to groan, but I want to make sure, you know, this council and the business community feel right. You know, we do have one more council meeting before the the eighth of February. So does the council want any update either through a study session before the February first meeting? Or an agenda item, you know, towards the end of February first being, so you have one more update. Of where we stand on some of these topics, because uh, we do have one more scheduled meeting that that um, is coming up before the eighth.
Okay.
This is Joe Angel. Um, I I would recommend that we have one after, you know, the first, so it gives you, it still gives, um, I know that you have mentioned it, Ray, that. We're about eighty percent there, and I know it's going to be hard to get to the full one hundred percent, but it just gives the business community. Uh, and you guys, everybody that, you know, that setting that you guys are able to still. Um, talk amongst amongst each other. You never know, there might be other things that you guys may find. Uh, to hash things out. So I I'd probably say, once you guys get um, that along, then maybe in another week. Uh, we can have another study session just to give you guys that that enough time where you guys can talk or, you know, or the business community can. Still reach out to whoever they need to reach out to, or we we do our due diligence on our part.
Okay, I'm I'm asking maybe staff now, would would next Tuesday be too soon? Um, because we have already a regularly scheduled meeting, um, that right now is pretty light. Uh, with an agenda, or are you looking, uh, do you need later in the week to get through this? So I I'm just going to be. Out of town, I I could still jump onto a meeting remotely, that's not a problem. I just want to know, is the February first meeting, uh, study session before the council meeting or an item during the meeting? Is that too soon for staff to to uh, review what's needed to be looked at by the industry group? Or even having another meeting with the industry group um. Over Friday or next Monday before the Tuesday meeting or do later and just open that up to my my staff. And and the consultants that do the real work on this.
Okay, uh, are there any staff that can answer that? Wayne?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, we just got. The letters today, some of them are very lengthy. Today is already the Thursday, the, what, the twenty seventh? I don't know. If we'll be able to have something done by Tuesday, the first. I don't know, I would have to look at. At my staff and our consultant, but that's not a lot of time.
So what about, what about Thursday, the third?
Uh, let me have Jose or maybe Laurel or Quang speak on that. But Jose, you know what's involved? We just got the letters today. We've been forwarding them. What's your thought on that?
I I can say that, you know, I I think while we can probably go through the letters from now until Tuesday. It wouldn't allow for any dialogue or conversation with the business community. What we would present on Tuesday would would really be staff's opinion or or recommendation. Based on what we, what we have read through the letter. Um, but if you had a couple more days, we we would have an opportunity to at least present that to the business community prior to to going back to you.
Well, why wouldn't, I mean, obviously, we're running out of time. So I I think that if you guys can read through the letters, give us some type of dialogue of. Or you're not gonna have a dialogue, but just what you've read and where you see the difference of that to give us on Tuesday. Then that way, if we have another meeting on what Joe Angel said Thursday. At least we we're a little bit more in tune of what's going on and going, because I mean, we only have till the week after next, guys, to uh. Get this, you know, down. So I mean. we only have till the week after next, guys, to uh, get this, you know, down. So I mean, time is of the essence.
Yeah.
I, that's what I would suggest.
Um, I, I'm, I, I appreciate all the comments. I, I think um, now what I've just heard and our agenda needs to be out tomorrow um, for Tuesday. I think maybe scheduling, if everybody's available on council next Thursday, um, and, and that uh, that would be, and so we can also have them uh, review the materials, meet with the industry group one more time and then have a study session next Thursday. I think that may, after hearing everybody's comments, that may be the best option.
So that gives us a week.
That gives us a week from now.
Okay, but so you're talking about the 3rd, correct, Ray?
Yes, sir.
So if everything is not done by the 3rd, we have till the 8th, which is two more days after that.
Councilmember Sarno, I'm sorry. What I thought I heard you say is that you would like to hear on Tuesday from staff on their thoughts after reading the correspondence. Is that correct?
That's exactly what I, I asked. And they said they want to do it on Thursday, which is fine. But my concern is if we have any changes or if we still don't have the answers that we're looking for, if, if we're not all, all on the same page, we only have another two more days after that. We only have till the 8th.
Jay, what, what the, what the staff said is that they could only give an opinion.
Yeah, but that'll help us.
Yeah, but that, yeah, uh, for Tuesday, but they would not be able to get that dialogue with the business community until Thursday.
Yeah. But that might change some of their inputs of what they're, what they're suggesting now to, to give us that opinion of it.
I mean, if we have a placeholder, I've got, um, you know, we don't have the analysis.
Yeah, I, I've, you know, is there council consensus? Would you like to see an item on Tuesday's agenda or would you like to have a study session prior to Tuesday's meeting? It is a light agenda. Uh, so we just want to get that direction from council.
I'm okay with this, uh, uh, an agenda item.
Yeah, I, I just give us, give us the comments of what they read.
Yeah.
And then that way Thursday, when we have that study session again, then we're at least a little bit ahead of the game because if we then ask more questions and changes, we only have till the 8th. So I mean, we, we're going to have to figure this out. I mean, if we have to, whatever we have to do to get it done, that's what we have to do. That's what I'm just, I'm saying. I mean, we don't have day, we don't have any more weeks to give, so we have.
Yeah, so, so we're talking an agenda item on Tuesday and a study session on Thursday. Is that what?
Yes.
Madam, madam.
Agenda, agenda item on Tuesday.
Yes, agenda, agenda item on Tuesday, a study session on Thursday.
And then also, Quang has his hand up, just in case you guys.
Yeah, I was just, Madam Mayor, we do have a couple hands up from staff. Thank you.
Oh, sure. Thank you. Uh, Quang, did you have something?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to kind of throw out there though, the study, uh, now that I think about it, the study session on Thursday might complicate the schedule because staff reports are due that day. So we would have to prepare a staff report for the 8th and submit it on Thursday and we won't really have any information.
Quang, we're, we're talking about a special meeting, so uh, we have, um, it'd be 20, I think between Tuesday and Thursday, we should have enough time.
Okay, I'm, I'm just thinking of the, the staff report for the 8th and when that is due.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Well, I think from what I've heard from, from what we've heard from council, I think it does make sense to put an agenda item on Tuesday's meeting since we're having a meeting anyway. And that way council can hear further from staff on your thoughts and then council can see if they want to have a, a, another session on Thursday.
Yeah.
Oh, so I would just block out your time on Thursday at 5 o'clock and then Tuesday, we can have a discussion if we're going to actually have it. And, and hopefully um, sometime next week, we're going to have a meeting with the, one more meeting with the business group.
Okay, are we all in agreement?
Yeah.
I have a comment. I just want to thank uh, Wayne and staff and uh, thank you guys because I know the last couple of weeks has been very hard and, you know, but it, I think this meeting has shown us that we're only talking for an hour and there really wasn't any big complaints anymore. Now we've, we've come to the grassroots of where we want to be at and I think it's just coming together. We're not going to make everybody happy. But at least we're, we've made great strides to get there and I want to thank Wayne and staff.
Yeah.
Guys, I've took a beating on this, but I really want to say thank you guys. And uh, everything will be, work out great for the city, the residents and the business community.
Perfect. Well said, Jim.
Okay, yes, uh, I also want to say on behalf of our council, thank you to our staff. Thank you to everybody that worked so hard to put these presentations together and all the time that you spent on all our study sessions. Uh, I would like to also thank our business community for all of their efforts and their public comments. Uh, you've been a great help to uh, enlighten us on what your vision is of our general plan. And with that said, uh, if there's no other further comments, I would like to adjourn the meeting.
I got one real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, you know, um, I, uh, in a way I wish that we could have started this whole dialogue, you know, months ago.
Yeah.
I think, you know, by now we would have been uh, probably done. But you know, that's all right, you know, spilled milk. Um, I'm glad to see the progress that we've made uh, so far. Uh, there's been a true engagement between uh, our staff, our council, uh, and our, our, our business sector. And bottom line is true, you know, uh, we got to be uh, look at the best interest for our entire city, you know, industrial residents and our residents alike, you know, we want uh, safety for them, of course. But we uh, also don't want to, you know, um, jeopardize uh, you know, our, our industry. Um, but um, I think there's definite strides uh, being made. Uh, yeah, my appreciation to uh, all those involved, particularly, you know, staff and then also, you know, our, our uh, business residents that have, you know, come forward. Um, I know that, you know, there's um, a lot that, you know, staff is going to have to deal with, you know, all these letters that came in and, you know, I agree with Quang, some quite lengthy and we have such a short period of time, but I think we just have to take with what we've got now. We've got, I did read through some of those and some of them are quite detailed. And you know, I know their work is definitely cut out for them. So, you know, I, you know, I got to hand to you guys that we're working with a, a lot in just a short period of time. But I think we also have to limit and not, you know, if we have any more letters come in, I think we got the, the bulk of it. We may, we made a lot of progress and I think we got plenty to work with. So uh, that's about it. All I have. So thank you very much.
Madam Mayor. And I would like to have uh, Councilmember Trahil say something, please.
Yeah, exactly. And you know what? This is what shows what our city is about. We listen to our industrial, we listen to our, our residents, we listen to our staff. It's not a one sided thing and I hope that the industrial residents realize that we are taking them into consideration because it was, it would have been very easy for us just to automatically say, whatever staff recommends, let's do it. And we're not. We, we are concerned about our industrial residents. We are concerned about everyone's, you know, uh, well being in the city. That's what we're here for. And please know, our industrial residents, we are listening to you. Our residents that live here, we are listening to you and we think, I said staff, you guys have taken a beating from us, but you guys still are, you know, working to the best of your ability to make it possible that everyone comes to an agreement. So thank you again. Thank you. Just be patient with us and we'll get this do, we'll get this done. Believe us.
Thank you, Juanita. And also, our mayor pro tem, Samara, can we have you speak, please?
Um, to be honest, I mean, just Wayne, Planning Department, um, Ivy, uh, Ray, uh, Travis, um, you know, Jose, the consultant, um, all you guys, uh, you know, on our staff, Quang, uh, everything that you guys have put out there and have done. Um, I know that sometimes it just seems like, you know, like Juanita said, we may have pushed you guys in a certain way, but you know what? We're, we're doing it because we know that we deeply care for this city and we just want to make sure that your work is not going in vain and we do appreciate all the hard efforts that you guys have and know that we do have your guys' back first. You know, you have to understand, you guys are our staff and you guys represent the city. So you know that you, we have, you know, we have your back first. Uh, the business community, thank you for just, um, you know, doing everything that you guys can to help both sides, to help everybody along the way. Um, this is what it takes to, to have a team here and you guys are part of this partnership. So I do thank you guys for what you guys have done. And once again, my hat goes off to all you guys. Uh, Ivy, thank you for keeping us in line and, 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 you know, keeping us focused. And, you know, I do appreciate that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. So with that said, I would like to adjourn the meeting. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Night.
Everybody.